Especially weddings. Since he's thirty-nine and she's forty, they decided they want a, they want a family anyway, so why not get started? I guess well, first one felt first. So, they're having a wedding before the kid gets born. And, and like I say, you know, the first one comes when it does, and then the rest of them take on, but then. But, so they're gonna have a wedding in September with the child. But they're having a family wedding later this month.
All right, it's five oh one. Let's get started. Welcome to the January nine, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. I need approval of the minutes for the December twelve, twenty twenty-three.
Support?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Communications from the audience for items that are not listed on the agenda as a public hearing can come forward now. Under new business. One zero five five Lincoln Avenue rezoning request to rezone point two acres of the property from manufactured housing community to corridor mixed use. Applicant is Sickle and Associates. If you could come forward at this time?
Hi, my name is Steve Kromandike. I'm an attorney with Sickle and Associates. My address is forty-two East Lakewood Boulevard, here in Holland. And I'm here on behalf of Willow Partners LLC for, like you said, a rezoning application for, and it's actually a point one nine acre triangular piece there on the southeast corner of Lincoln and US thirty-one. The piece is actually currently part of Willow Park Mobile Home Park there. And so, the, the Mobile Home Park owners are in agreement with this and, and have signed off on the application. We had a workshop on, on the fifth. Three neighbors attended. Mervin Hockstetter, Hockstetter from Aesthetic Gardner LLC, which is on the northwest corner of Lincoln and thirty-one, Ryan DeVries from Russ's, and then City Councilman Devin Shea was in attendance as well. And then, and then Kevin got an email or a phone call from Tom Scott with West Michigan Office Interiors. He wasn't able to make the meeting, but wanted some information on it. And so we kind of explained the, what we're looking to do to him, and he was in agreement as well. And so specifically, what we're looking to do is, like you said, rezone that triangular piece from Mobile Home Park, MHR, to CMU corridor mixed use. There are six criteria that are established under the Udo. We believe that, that the request meets all six of those. And, and the staff report outlined those, those criteria. I also outlined them in a letter to the, to the board and to the Planning Commission. I'm happy to walk through those if you guys would like. But I don't need to, to, you know, re, remake the wheel here either. The commercial parcel, which is on the corner there of the highway, already has an exclusive easement over this area to use for access for ingress and egress purposes. And so, you know, it's already being used for, for, for access. We believe it's the, just makes sense as the, as the best spot there. M.DOT has said that they'd prefer that we push access as far south off of thirty-one as possible for traffic flow purposes. And so this is as far south as we can get, right? And then the Udo also has a preference for lining up entryways, access points, driveways. And so this would allow the access drive there to line up with Russ's across Lincoln. And then in addition, it's, it's, this, this triangular area is already kind of partitioned off from the Mobile Home Park. It's on the other side of a, of a row of, of trees that's acting as a barrier right now, pine trees there. And, and, and so it's, it's really not usable for the Mobile Home Park based on where it is and the, and the size of it. And, and so for those reasons, we think it just makes sense to be used as an access point for the commercial parcel there on the corner of the highway in Lincoln. And then finally, i- it's actually already master planned highway commercial, which is, which is what that part, piece on the, on the, on the corner is. And so we would just be adding it to what is already existing as highway commercial there. So that's what we're looking to do. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any?
Anyone in the commission have a question?
I've got, I've got a couple, as always.
Okay.
Any different than, because we, we looked at this
Yeah.
last spring, right?
Yep.
Am I remembering the timing right on this? Exact same piece of property?
Exact same piece of property.
Okay.
I guess the only difference is, is that it, this is just a straight rezone request. It's not being made in, in, you know, conjunction with anything else, with any site plan approval or anything else. This is kind of outside of any, any, you know, development.
Okay. And, and just to refresh the other commissioners' memories on this, we voted to recommend a council to rezone it. The night that it came up in front of the, of the city council, there were only seven of the nine members at the city council. The city council voted four to three to rezone it, but because this is an ordinance change to the code of ordinances of the city, it required five votes in order to pass. So it was one of those weird situations where a majority of the people voted for it, but it did not pass.
Correct.
There was a, there is also another technicality in the, in the city's, city, I don't know if it's charter or ordinance, that it can be brought back again at the next regular meeting of the council if someone who voted against it, the first time, I believe, asked to have it brought forward again. But at that next meeting, there were still only seven members there, and so it didn't look like the numbers would, would match. And so, and my understanding is, is there, the staff has taken a look at this, and it's perfectly all right for the exact same thing to come back to us again at this stage, that there doesn't need to be a change. I'm not sure if there was a time limit there or not. But I just want to be clear that it's exactly the same thing that was being asked for last year.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Couple of questions that came up at the council level. One of them had to do with the idea that perhaps this would be a location that some single-family residential or an expansion of the mobile home park could happen. I'm looking at this aerial photograph and trying to do some, oh, look at that. Thank you. And trying to, trying to, in my brain at least, superimpose one of those mobile homes on that corner. You've already gone through the fact that it's already being used as an ingress, egress path.
And, and it's actually, yeah, they have an, an exclusive easement there, so that, so, you know, the Mobile Home Park actually can't use it.
Right, so, but I'm, I'm trying to go through all of the theoretical things here. So if the possibility that ten thirty-three Lincoln gave up the exclusive easements to that, to that, for that use, if you took down the line of trees, I'm still looking at that and going, I'm not sure whether that, it, it's even possible to put something there. Am I, am I asking the wrong person that question? Or Steve, maybe you can field that, that answer?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I look at that too, and I, I think if you were lucky, you'd be able to get one mobile home park. But by the time you take away setbacks, even if it remained as mobile home park zoning, I, I, I don't really see how that's possible. I mean, we haven't tried to fit that in exactly, but point one nine acres equals about eight thousand square feet.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that math for me. I wasn't able to do that.
Sorry, yeah, that's what you're talking, so I don't think that that's possible. And if it was, you're, you're literally talking about one mobile home.
Okay. I just, I, I just want to be as clear as possible to everybody about what it is that we're talking about with this, because one of the, we had, we had coffee with council last Saturday morning, and a question that was raised multiple times was, are there, are there rezoning requests coming down the line that might eliminate the possibility of some single-family housing somewhere? And my, I knew this was, was on the agenda, and my, my answer to them was, I don't see any way in the world that there could ever be single-family hous- housing on this site.
Correct. And, and it, just to clarify too, in addition, we're looking to, to zone it to highway commercial. Residential is actually allowed in that zoning district as well. So we're actually not taking away the ability to, to use this for residential purposes, right? It's, it's actually allowed under either zoning district.
And you're, and you're not tying it to a specific site plan?
Correct.
For all we know, because when we rezone, we're not rezoning based on a particular site plan. We're based on a possibility of a use down the line.
And, and, yeah, and like I said, it's, it's actually master planned, you know, highway commercial already, right? This, this little piece. So, so, you know, putting a, a mobile home on it, right, would actually be kind of a- against the, the future land use map.
Okay. And, but theoretically, under, if it were rezoned, somebody could use that as an access point to some sort of housing development that might be built on that corner because it's allowable under that zoning use. Okay. All right. That's what I, that's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Steve, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just real quick. So I know we're not talking about a specific site plan. I did include in the staff report the comment that since we're still within the window of, of time that the, because if you remember, this also went to Board of Appeals. We're still within the window of time that if you did rezone it, they could develop the gas station under all of the old conditions. And so if everything were to stay the same, they'd be able to do that without coming back to you. So I guess I just want to make sure everybody clearly understands that as well. I know they've indicated this is just for the, the rezone. It's not for the site plan, but those things are still a possibility as well. And then I guess I'll just, you know, make the comment that staff is recommending the rezoning again for a lot of the reasons that you talked about already. This is the map showing the current zoning, showing the future land use designation as commercial. The reason why we require the rezoning is because of that use to the north to, to have access to, it needs to be in the same zoning district. So that's really what is triggering the rezoning again. And then maybe just to remind you, when we went through the recent master plan update, you know, when we were kind of getting into some of the weeds, talking about some parcel identification things, we did talk about this, knowing that since it didn't get approved at city council and we, you know, there was a discussion about, well, should we consider changing it on our future land use map because it didn't get approved at council? And, you know, just to remind you, we decided to keep it in the same zoning district. So everything is the same as you saw it before. Staff is once again recommending approval of the rezoning. We think it also meets all of the criteria for that which you have in your packet.
Great. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, guys.
And Steve. Any other discussion? Oh, wait, this does require a public hearing. And I will open that at this time if anyone would like to come forward on this. And I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion or motions?
I have a motion, and then I'd like to make some comments after that. I, I move we approve the staff's recommendation.
I would support that.
And then your comments?
Yeah, I, based on everything we've talked about, I think this makes all the sense in the world. We're, we're not talking as much about this little, as this little piece as the ability to be able to, to use the piece that's immediately to the north of it. You know, the, the, it matches the zoning for the future land use. It matches the zoning of the parcels on, on two sides of it, not the, not the Mobile Home Park, but I don't see where it would ever be used to be part of that Mobile Home Park. And without this access, that, that parcel to the north either can't be used or we, it is a much less safe way to get in and out of that parcel. You know, I'm looking at this at, not only the ability to be able to use a parcel of property that's sat essentially vacant, other than, I think, some used car sales
Fireworks.
and fireworks sales over the course of the years, something that, that might be a little bit better use of that property in the future. I think it just makes all the sense in the world to do it.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Lynn?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I think, you know, you can't, you can't think about this piece of property in a vacuum because, this tiny piece of property, because we are approving it in order to move forward with some development there. I think I, you know, it's one of those examples of, I wish I had better foresight in thinking about this particular piece of property. I think our concerns, my concerns anyway, the last time was the, the proximity to the Mobile Home Park. We had rejected a, a similar kind of project across the highway, almost primarily because of residential properties that were right across the street. And so we rejected that one, and yet we approved this one. And so I, so I, I think it's unfortunate that we didn't have, we, we didn't think too farther into the future about what would be a good use for this piece of property. I think in my mind, it's, it's the, it's the high, excuse me, it's the highway. So, you know, that's where, that's where businesses are, right? But I wasn't really looking the other way. So however, I, you know, there's no, you know, you've put together a very, you know, you've established criteria. The criteria's been established. It's clear that this is a, that this is allowable based on, based on the, the rezoning criteria. So I think that I understand why we would need to move forward with the, with the rezoning. I'm just disappointed. Not because of your project, of course. Well, actually, maybe we are. But I'm sure, I'm, you know, I, it sounds to me like based on the site plan that you presented the last time, you'll take into consideration the neighbors and, and protect them from any kind, from as much as you can from the impact of that. And, and, you know, for sure, there will be some benefits to those neighbors as well. So I, we can't ignore those.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and we have support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item, text amendment requests to chapter thirty-nine, unified development ordinance, two sections. Thirty-nine, shall I read all of them?
You don't have to.
Okay, I didn't know if I had to or if I could let you go one by one.
We'll go through them one by one.
Okay, thank you.
So you guys saw this during the study session, so this will look very similar. We did have a discussion about a couple items, made one change. We didn't make another. I'll go through that as we, as we go through each one. This first, this first change is what we think is really just a clarification or will help in section four point oh two, outdoor storage and process screening, just listing the section where you're gonna find some of those screening requirements. So just adding that in there. So we think that's a clarification. The next change in four point oh four for parking lots as a principal use, it's really a correction. So you can see down there, we're putting a different reference in there. Nine oh two C three is where that should be pointing you to. So this is really just a correction. This is section C three where you see the setback requirements that it should be pointing you to. So that literally is a correction. Lighting applicability. So right now, our lighting requirements, which I did include all of the, the chapter in here, if anybody has any questions, but right now, our lighting standards apply to properties requiring site plan approval. So we've had a couple examples of, you know, maybe somebody wanting to put something up that is prohibited, but because they haven't gone through site plan approval, we didn't have anything to tell them that, oh, you cannot do that. So we wanted to make these couple slight changes here that would apply our lighting standards to properties other than residential dwellings with one to four units. So we just thought it, it might be best for, for the residential if we just sort of kept them out of it. They're, they're not having to meet those requirements now. So just sort of exempt them from this as we make this change. As I say, I've got the rest of the lighting stuff in here. That seven point oh five is the prohibited lighting. I think the one example I, I'm thinking of is we had somebody that wanted to put up searchlights that we don't allow, but we didn't have a, really the ability to tell them that they couldn't do that.
Steve, I don't, I don't want to interrupt you, but I think it's apropos at this point. I, it seems to me that we used to talk about lighting with site plans a lot, and it just doesn't seem to come up now. Is that because it's better with Udo, or is it because Andrew Blunt's not sitting at the table? Is it?
Our expert has asked.
Design standards are just more tight.
Yeah.
I mean, that's
Yeah, I guess I'd like to believe it's what's in Udo, and, you know, we, we require that they submit those plans and they, they meet them or they don't. And so, but unfortunately, if you weren't going through that, you know, the concern would be somebody just wanting to do something that everybody else has to meet.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. That means, that means we did good, and at least that one thing did good work on Udo. I'm sure there are many, many others. But it just, that struck me that I don't think we've had discussions about lighting at site plans since Udo was passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
And, and to be quite honest, I think a lot of the developer engineer types are, are getting more and more familiar with this. Other communities have this, that it's just normal for them to be submitting the photometrics and things like that. So I think it's become more normal as well. Site plan approval extensions. So this was one of the things we did talk about during the study session that we did make a change to. So the, the issue here was for plans that were expiring, you can come back. The way it was written right now is you come back to the Planning Commission to get your one-year extension. We wanted to have something in there that would essentially allow somebody who only had to go through administrative site plan approval to not have to come back to the Planning Commission. So changing that language to the same approving authority which approved the site plan rather than the Planning Commission. Nonconforming sections. So this is probably where we had the most changes, probably where we had the most discussion. City attorney was involved in, in these updates as well. So this first set of amendments, nonconforming structures, thirteen point oh three expansion. So we're making some changes here that really, we think, provide some clarification through, because of a, a Board of Appeals case that went through, and working with the city attorney, providing some of this clarification for expansions of these nonconforming structures. So that's really the red line version that you see there. I know we're striking out that section number two, but that was just something that, kind of an earlier version that we were gonna put in and take out, so it's not in there right now. And then the second half of the nonconforming amendments in regards to repairs in thirteen point oh six, this is probably where we spent the most time at the study session talking about. And really what the changes here are, so this would be the example of, you know, somebody, their house burned down type of thing. It's, it's a nonconforming structure, but it was destroyed. And somebody wanting to rebuild that, right now, you have to get this determination by the Board of Appeals. And we think it would be a little bit more efficient to allow the zoning administrator to do that. If somebody, if that determination was denied, you could appeal it then to the Board of Appeals, but just to allow that to sort of happen a little more efficiently, to allow the zoning administrator to do that. And then the area that we probably talked about the most was in that subparagraph number one, we struck out that repair, maintenance, and restoration will not substantially extend the life. And then there was almost a duplicate part of that sentence at the end of that paragraph. And I think that's what we talked about, was getting rid of that end of that sentence in number one. And I probably didn't do a good job of describing the reason why we were taking that out. But the city attorney gave you a letter that is trying to explain why he wants to keep that in. So I know the end of his, his little memo here says, you know, to not approve the, you know, what was proposed by the Planning Commission. He's really referring to the change that you discussed at the study session level. So what he's suggesting is to adopt the version that is presented to you here tonight without modifying the end of that sentence at the bottom of paragraph number one. Maybe I've made that more confusing than it needs to be. I also just want to explain that here at the end, this is an additional paragraph that we're putting in here that basically says if you do get this determination that you can rebuild your, your nonconforming structure, that you have one year to get your permits and two years to get your occupancy. The thought there is, you know, we don't want people walking around with these approvals in infinity, that if you're gonna do that, we want you to act on it and, and proceed with it in a timely manner. So those are the changes to that nonconforming section that we're proposing. So we didn't make the change that we talked about at study session.
Did you go back to that one?
No.
Did you remove, so the blue is not removed?
The blue is being removed. What we talked about is because it's, it's kind of a duplicate sentence there at the bottom, limiting the possibility that the restoration will substantially extend the probable duration of the life of the structure. We talked about also removing that at the end of paragraph number one.
We had a lot of discussion about how it was slightly redundant, but
I thought it was redundant, so we're leaving one of those lines in.
And that's essentially what the city attorney has said, is he would like to keep that in, and he thinks it's important that it stays in.
Yeah. I, I do remember having that conversation, and I, because my, my thought on it was, any restoration is likely going to extend the probable life of the, of the structure. But this is, this is really mushy language in that last part of the, you know, the, the reasonable probability that it will substantially increase the probable life of the structure. You know, how many, how many more ambiguous terms can we put in there? I do like the fact, though, in that if you go back one, that, that we removed, oh, one more for me. We removed in the paragraph B above it that we removed neglect, so that somebody can't just neglect their building, so that, that, then they can restore it later, I think is a, a great thing to keep out of there.
Yep, agreed.
And the last one here was in the definition section of yard, and I think the pictures probably helped the most. To make sure that we aren't counting properties that may be described out to the center of the road, what I describe as meets and bounds parcels. So example being six ninety-nine East Sixteenth Street there on the corner. You can see the property lines out to the middle of the road. We don't want to take setbacks from the middle of the road, even though that may be their property line. So that definition is being modified to make sure that we're not counting road, public road right-of-way when we, when we talk about their yard for definition purposes. So just because there's a little bit of a difference between maybe a platted lot and a meets and bounds description. So that's an, a small update to that, to those two definitions. That's your round ten Udo amendments that we're asking you forward to city council for approval.
Okay, thank you, Steve. This does require, does anybody have any questions from Steve at all about any of those? This does require a public hearing, which I will open at this time, and I will close at this time, seeing there's no one coming forward.
Move to approve the recommendation of staff.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. No? All right. Thank you, Steve and Tricia. We'll give you some credit for that, too.
Now that we've hit the magic number ten, do we want to start describing them? Something is different than, you know, there, our tenth revision to Udo, that it's just, that it's just updates to the ordinance or little things. I, I, there's been some public perception that the Udo was a flawed document, because we've had to go back, I know, hard to believe, that we've had to go back ten times and amend it in the last two years, which, you know, any, any of us know that a document that's this big is gonna have a lot of these little kinds of things in it. But I've just, I'm just curious whether other commissioners
Do you just put like a date on it?
Pardon me?
Just put like a, like, May update?
May update.
May of twenty twenty-four update or something. May of twenty twenty-four update or something, right? Rather than it just being a number, yeah.
We can do that, that's not a problem.
Sounds good. Communications and petitions, scheduling of public hearings, there are none. Communications from commission members? No, I will welcome Jennifer Payne. And say, we said goodbye to Mallory, so Jennifer is now here with us. Communications from staff?
I just have a couple things. You're going to get an invite for the joint meeting. We're going to do something a little bit different, but maybe pencil in February twentieth. Here. Four to five thirty, four to five thirty. This year it's going to be a little bit more of an educational topic. We're going to have a speaker from, I think it's the Michigan Association of Planning come in and kind of talk about roles and responsibilities and, can't remember, Mark. Staying in your lane, I think are there, are there, are there topics?
Staying in your lane.
Building bridges, so those are their topics they're going to talk about.
Don't be so lame.
And then maybe just a reminder that we'll do the bylaw review and election of officers next month.
Okay.
Wow.
On the second Tuesday you're talking about though, that's, that's different than the February twenty.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the election of officers and the bylaws will be at our next planning commission meeting. The February twentieth is a separate meeting from, from our planning commission meeting.
Correct. Our next planning commission meeting will be February thirteen.
Right. That's all I have.
Motion for adjournment.
So move?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No.